I don't have any audio online.
How about now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear you guys now.
Thank you for letting us know. Jackie or is she calling the rollers? Jackie, call for the roll, please.
Okay. Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Bjornson.
Here.
Counselor Charman.
Here.
Counselor Hooker.
Here.
Mayor Kutchin.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Hollitt.
President.
I can't, I can see, we'll see, but I can't hear her.
Here.
She's here, Jackie.
Okay.
Next is number four, which is additions, corrections, adjustments to the agenda. Any counselors have adjustments?
Yeah, I have one. I would like to table nine point four to the next meeting. Myself and chambers president, Michelle Emmons are going to discuss our two topics together at a later date. That would include nine point five.
Okay. Any other adjustments by the council?
Wanted to add to talk about the on the asphalt pump track proposal that Jason and Tom are here to answer any questions if need be.
Okay, we'll make that nine point nine. Okay?
Yeah.
And I don't have any other adjustments. So moving on to public comment, we'll start on the Zoom. Is there anyone on the Zoom platform that would like to make a comment? Okay, in the room, any public comment? You want to come forward? This city's okay, no need for an address.
Hello, hello. I just wanted to make public comment tonight because I, my name's Eugene Cowgarth, live here at seven six five zero and I'm involved in a number of things, sort of auxiliary to the city as a volunteer. I'm the coach of the local junior bike team, it's the National Elastic Cycling Association, NICA. I'm also the current sitting president for UBR, which is an organization you may or may not know about, but I hope you do. It's the Uptown Business and Revitalization Association. We're a small group, we should be more involved. Speaking to you, so we can be. And I also am a board member of the Oak Ridge Trails Alliance, which is called OTA, and just as of last night, the goats and the OTA signed a resolution to become one organization, so phasing out OTA. And I was inspired to speak to you tonight because I just recently heard from Rick that that crosswalk hurt project. And I guess I wanted to, I was, I was kind of really surprised to hear that that was happening so quickly. And I applaud you all for making things happen. I know that we're here volunteers, and I totally understand that. But I just wanted to say I'm pretty involved in a few different things, and I hadn't heard a call to artists or that there is community input about this project. And I want you guys to know that that I don't think that there is sufficient outreach done. I understand that Rick volunteered, it's time to go out to the art block and get flyers out there, and you guys have a flyer up there at St. Paul. Like I said, I get it, everyone's one. I actually think there is but I guess just moving forward, I would just ask that try a little more to reach out to organizations that might involve art represented, people with access. And I would venture to guess that if I didn't think about it, there were a lot of other what's happening. Concern is that if councils choose to defer its projects without maybe involvement and consent, what you will find, I fear is resentment that somebody wanted to be involved. The opportunity to and I guess I'm a little bit skeptical, not within parts, but it's like, hey, you know, I wanted to be involved in this, I thought I was. So just, you know, in the future, maybe you allow a little more time for thanks very much. Wait, one more thing. You guys are also talking about the pump track and Tressel resolution that I super exciting. I'm excited that the cities think about those things.
Your public comment in the room or? Okay, nothing urgent, move on. Your comments, announcements. Your comments, announcements and proclamations. First, let everybody know there's an invitation from the American Legion for all military veterans, the post sixty-four sponsoring tonight a bowling, food and comradeship at the Willamette Lanes in Oak Ridge. It's Wednesday, April twenty-sixth from six to nine. And any and all veterans and their immediate families are invited as well as active duty. The cost is entry, food and bowling are free for veterans and their immediate families. And there's an opportunity to RSVP and there's a, is there be a flyer out in the lobby? Okay, fly out there with Ken Wright's contact information or George Custer's contact information. So a great opportunity if you want to bowl. Next is, I got a call from Congresswoman Val Hoyle. We had submitted a congressionally directed spending request to get a grant to finish off, round out the funding we already have for the Willamette Activity Center renovation. And she collected it from all of her constituents, all the cities could, could submit. She had to narrow them all down to fifteen and we are one of the fifteen going forward, and she was very optimistic because the criteria on the congressionally directed spending, where it came from is we matched that pretty well, so keep your fingers crossed and perhaps we'll get two point seven five million dollars to round that out. Let's see. Yes, be positive, I like that. Any council comments or announcements on the Zoom? Counselor Bjornson or Hooker?
I don't have anything, Mayor. Nothing for me.
Around the table?
I do, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to announce, I saw something in our packet that says that tomorrow at the school, the high school, Lane County Sheriff's Office is going to be presenting about a ballot measure that's coming up regarding asking us to continue. So it won't cost any new money, we're already, it's already something that we're paying, but they would like us to continue to support the sheriff's office for the services that they provide Lane County. And then I wanted to remind the council to please, when you have some time, review the council rules and submit your recommendations to city administrator. Also, I wanted to point out that at our last meeting, we approved a fee waiver to the Moose Lodge for their gambling license. And the amount that was listed on the paper was seventy-five dollars, but I noticed in our administration meeting, or not admin, no, it was administration last night, that the actual charge for that is either one hundred dollars or two hundred and fifty dollars depending on if it's the owner or the non-owner where the gambling is going to happen. So I'm imagining that since it was approved, it doesn't really matter that the number was wrong, but I would like to recommend that the city might, or the city administrator might direct staff to look through all of our forms and make sure that their current numbers with our current fee schedule, which is also going to be probably renewing in a couple of months, so we'd have to do it again, but and then let's see. I think that's all for my council comments. Thank you.
First, I want to thank you for your work on the grant for the WAC. I know you put a lot of time into that and that could be huge benefit to Oak Ridge. Second, I wanted to announce, make sure everybody knows the Tree Planting Festival is May fifth, sixth and seventh. Lots and lots of activities going on if you're not already following the Tree Planting Festival Facebook page, there's, you should, because there's a ton of information. If you have questions, I think I saw Vanessa Tharp login. So reach out to her. Lots of people putting in work and I do know that next year they're going to need more volunteers. So if it's something you're interested in, if you see all the excitement going on this year, I think to reach out to her and maybe consider helping out with that next year. Eugene, thank you for coming and speaking about your concern. I know sometimes that's hard to say something in a positive, negative fashion like that, but I hear you and I do think that we try really hard to advertise some, everything we can, because I think all of the city staff and council really wants to be as inclusive as possible to everybody and as you've said, it's so hard to get volunteers and we try so hard to get as many people and I know Rick has been working really hard on this and he has put it out in a few places at least that I've seen. But we might not be reaching all the avenues. So if you do have some better ideas of who to specifically reach out to, get with me afterwards, or James or Rick, because any, anybody, this is, and there's going to be multiple crosswalks. I know Rick has a big plan for this, so this is just phase one of a hope. I mean, I would love to see all of Uptown, so I think Rick is, he's got a lot of plans, so this is not the only opportunity for people to be involved in that project. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Moving on to item eight, the consent agenda, there was one typo, James, on the minutes. Do I hear a motion accepting that that typo has been made and for a consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion was made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor. Hooker. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yeah, who seconded?
Counselor Hooker.
Hooker. Counselor Hooker.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Mayor Kutchin.
Aye.
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to nine, business from the city council, nine point one. Fourth of July fireworks fee waiver request for Green Waters Park. I'd first like to ask if there are any conflicts of interest that need to be stated. Okay, James, you want to introduce us?
Just thank you, Mayor. All right, so our annual Fourth of July fireworks event is obviously on the Fourth of July. Organizers are asking for a fee waiver to be able to use the park for that event. The cost of a fee waiver would be a thousand dollars. There are no conflicting reservations at this time and it would just be on the Fourth of July.
Okay, can I hear a motion?
I move to approve the Green Waters Park fee waiver request for the Fourth of July fireworks.
A second?
I'll second.
Which may by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Hooker, discussion. Anyone on the Zoom, Counselor Bjornson or Hooker?
Nothing for me. I don't have anything at this time.
So Charman?
My only concern is like if we're going to have any kind of restrictions, if the fire hazard is too high, work with the fire forest service. There's a giant forest right on the other side of the river, so I mean, I'm, yeah, that's one thing I'm concerned about, like a no-go, no-go scenario.
Is there any discussion on that, James, during the application?
Well, in years past, there definitely has been. We coordinate with fire department and forest service. I remember there was
Forest Service attends the event as well as ODF.
Right, so there's fire engines there, et cetera, and I know that, was it last year or the year before, it almost didn't happen because of fire danger, but it was determined to be okay.
Yeah, twenty-one, there was a resolution passed that would have prohibited the fireworks had the fire hazard level been an extreme. Okay, so if something like that could happen, we wanted to consider that as a resolution.
Oh, it's not.
It's not. It was a one-time, one-year resolution.
Okay.
So we should, if you're interested, we could consider that for this year.
I think based on past fires, I'd be interested in seeing something like that, like a no-go scenario with restrictions, I guess.
Okay. Counselor Hollitt, any discussion?
No, other than the Forest Service brings a brush rig, they usually stage it over on the Duke Road during the event and then ODF attends inbound, sometimes attends, and then the fire department also attends the event. And they wet down the entire area before the event during and after.
No.
That's okay.
I would only ask if we're going to consider doing a resolution, is it possible a resolution that obviously we would cancel if it was extreme danger? But is it possible to just have that be a standing resolution versus
Yeah, that would make sense.
a one-year only? I mean, it, I think it makes sense that we don't even need a resolution, but you know, if it has to happen, we could do that.
Um, so I did have some questions. James, who's, you talked about insurance that's required. It's a million dollar required if it's an over a hundred person event? By the hosting agency, whoever's doing the event?
Yeah, I don't think, there's not really one hosting agency. I know that there's insurance on the team that puts up the fireworks.
So CIS has covered it every year and they've never charged anything. There's a lot standing paperwork. There's standing policy.
Problem there is that if something actually happens city.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm saying is that I know that Harry Rumor, is he the one, is he doing anything? He has to have the license and insured.
As well has a couple million dollar policy, so it's between the three.
So they just, someone of those people needs to name the city as additional insured.
Yes, that happens every year.
So I'm checking on. Also, will it be law enforcement at the event as required by the application?
Yeah.
Okay. Has a medical safety plan been approved by the fire chief and the police chief?
No, not at this time.
Supposed to be in place before you actually approve the application. And what time does the event conclude? Application says it has to be over by ten. Unless the city council.
It's probably about that's about, is it closer to eleven? Last year was pretty short.
Noise stops at ten oh. Music and things, any, any of that stops at ten o'clock.
And has a permit been obtained from the state fire marshal?
That's again, usually something that happens closer to the event. What I'm asking for right now is just, is just the fee waiver.
Well, it's also the event application.
Yeah, I included that as information, yeah, but I have not signed off on that yet.
Okay, I just asked that you follow up on those things before signing on the bottom line.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Mayor Kutchin.
Nay.
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Counselor Hooker.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to nine point two, which is the wildfire safety night fee waiver request for Green Waters Park. James?
All right, this is another fee waiver request for the Green Waters Park Amphitheater and Community Building for July fourteenth. Two-hour event from five to seven PM for the annual community wildfire safety night sponsored by the Southern Willamette Forest Collaborative, Oak Ridge Air, Firewise USA, El Rapa, Lane County inbound. Oregon Department of Energy, sorry, Oregon Department of Forestry, City of Oak Ridge, City of Westford, US Forest Service and other community organizations. It's been going on for a few years now. Last year was also on July fourteenth. This year, it's July fourteenth, but it's a Friday. And Director of Southern Willamette Forest Collaborative, Sarah Ultimus Pope is here in case there are any questions, but it'll be very similar to years past and they are simply asking for the fee waiver request, which is valued at five hundred and eighty dollars because they don't need the entire park. And again, it's just a two-hour event for the community.
Thanks, James. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the Green Waters Park fee waiver request for the twenty twenty-three wildfire safety night.
I'll second that.
That Counselor Coker?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. A motion made by Counselor Hooker, seconded by Counselor Coker, any discussion? Or questions of the director, if it's okay with council? All right, the only thing I would ask, James, is you, those same things we just spoke of for the Fourth of July, if you'd follow up or signing on the bottom line for
Sure.
Jackie, call for a vote, please.
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Counselor Charman. Mayor Kutchin.
Aye.
Counselor Hooker.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to nine point three, Oak Ridge Air Annual Update. James?
All right, so we have the annual update by Sarah Ultimus Pope. There's a PowerPoint presentation that Colleen will run. Probably easiest just to run it off the PowerPoint that's already open. Yeah, it's already open there on the bottom.
More in depth and kind of give more specific updates. So this, this update is a bit of a holdover of our last semi-annual meeting and a few other things, so but the numbers are really current. So first, I should start by introducing myself. So my name's Sarah Ultimus Pope. I'm a local resident here, no longer in Oak Ridge. I, I finally moved out of Oak Ridge after forty-something years, so now I live just outside of town. So, but I've been here a long time and, and in twenty fourteen started working on a master's degree project that became the Southern Lemus, Lemmet Forest Collaborative and was working with the city and other partners at that point on the air attainment issue with our PM two point five from, mostly from wintertime wood smoke. And that project involved into an organ solutions project, which evolved into working with a consultant firm, Good Company, and getting their assistance to help El Rapa submit for a targeted assistance grant from EPA. And at the time that grant landed, El Rapa put out kind of a, an interest query for, for businesses that would like to fulfill the contract to help on that grant, and there was only one company who put in from Portland. And at that time, we just sat around the table and said, we really want these jobs to be here. We really want this project to be implemented here. Who's going to do it? And after a bunch of like pointing fingers that kind of landed on Rick and I, and we took a leap of faith and started it, and now it's grown into what it is now. So that's kind of the backstory and I'll talk more specific about the deliverables and where we are now. But yeah, that's our origin story, so.
Excuse me, Sarah. Colleen, there's a little icon of a screen in the lower right-hand corner, if you click it. Yeah, yeah. It's down at the bottom, right, next one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it looks like you're on PowerPoint, so it might look a little bit different, so we'll just see how things turn out.
Thank you.
So if you could hit next slide. Thank you. Okay, so here's kind of, I'll get the technicals really quick and check my time. So the targeted assistance grant brought specific funding to the community to do home heating upgrades because our community, we do not have natural gas and a lot of people still rely on firewood to heat their homes, which is really important and unfortunately, El Rapa understands that as a partner. And so we've had some interventions to try and help deal with our air attainment problem which came about in, in two thousand and six when the EPA lowered the standard. But some of the limitations of those programs made it to where people had to swap out wood stoves and go to pellet stoves. And a lot of people are wary to do that because we live in an area where we can lose electricity and sometimes often. And so with this program, that was one of the things we really leaned into and then also making it available to people rent. Because that's a lot of another big portion of our, our housing stock. So initial grant was for four point nine million. Most of that is set aside for those upgrades. And then we still had the opportunity to put in for a second grant, which we were awarded in twenty twenty-two, which continued the program. So the program's supposed to end in twenty twenty-five. But we, we wanted to extend some of these, the good portions of it and serve some more homes. So now we have funding out till twenty twenty-seven. And we added some new things, one of those being, and I'll get to these as we talk about them, but community education outreach. Kind of what Eugene was hitting upon tonight, that we were as a team sharing all the outreach duties in the first couple of years of the program and just realized, wow, this is not something that you can like just spread across a bunch of different people. It, you do need dedicated staffing and effort, so we, we asked for a part-time education outreach coordinator, and now that we have that person, we realize we really should ask for full-time. So, but it's been really awesome having someone that can do that work. And so probably you're seeing us being a little bit more responsive on some of the outreach stuff and newsletters and all the things that kind of were easy to slip through the cracks before. A little more funding for some of the projects that were things that came upon us as ideas when we first got started, so yard waste program, wood sheds, chimney sweep vouchers now, moisture meters and a few other things, the electronic reader board. So that's all happening now. And then there's a bigger program working with the University of Oregon and actually doing research into the effectiveness of this program. So that funding isn't going to us and it's quite a bit of funding that's going to them, but the EPA saw the value in that because they want to know, is this working for Oak Ridge and is it something we should look to for other communities? We can go to the next slide. So the big thing that happened this year is we did get a designation as a maintenance plan. So we are not out of, we're not, we're not in non-attainment anymore, but we're not totally in full attainment, but this is a really great next step because now we can work with businesses that might have a pollutant that we can, they don't have to buy multimillion dollar scrubbers for their, their, whatever their industry might be. So now there is a way that we can, they don't have to buy multimillion dollar scrubbers for their, their, whatever their industry might be. So now there is a way forward for some of the economic development stuff that we weren't able to do anymore. And and what means the EPA is still going to be working with Oak Ridge very closely for the next ten years while we're in this maintenance plan and watching our numbers and whatnot. You know, nothing would happen. We wouldn't do anything that wouldn't be in partnership with lane regional air protection anyways. But it is a great great thing to be now out of non attainment. That being said, we cannot qualify for tag rents anymore. But so that's the one fallback. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. So right now, we have these two slides mixed up. So I I'll just say, high level, our aim is to serve one hundred ninety-five homes with wood stove upgrades. So right now, we've gotten three hundred and fifty applicants into the program. That is a big part of it is getting as many applicants as we can. I'll talk a little about that in a bit. But the Cedar Creek Fire really helped us reach some of the populations that we really hadn't reached yet. Homes in the program, sixty-two active, audits forty-nine, and then I'll just talk about the change up. So we've had twenty-four change outs of wood stoves. So this is upgrading wood stoves. And we're looking for wood stoves that are basically older than twenty years. So some people will be like, oh, I have a certified wood stove. I can't get in the program. Well, certification started in the eighties or nineties, but an old ninety something wood stove that certified is still not that great wood stove. So we can upgrade those. And opt out, some people saying, no, I don't want this wood stove anymore. So they'll take a pellet stove or ductless heat pump, electric heat, which mainly means ductlets, heat pumps. And then what's original about our program is doing the weatherization. It's the hard work of the program because you're talking about little jobs and finding contractors that want to do little jobs. But this is really, I think, in Oak Ridge where we make this program effective because we have such old housing stock. And so a lot of these houses are not sealed very well or insulated very well. So being able to offer people that with a ductless heat pump and an upgrade really, I think, makes a difference and people be able to keep their homes warm. All right, next slide. So yeah, our goal is one hundred ninety-five homes, hopefully more, we don't know. And the rate we're trying to shoot for forty homes a year, we haven't hit our numbers that we've been hoping to hit really because the it's been hard to find contractors. So you know, the housing market has gone crazy for a while. Contractors didn't want to come up from town. The local contractors are really busy. Covid wasn't helping things. We're starting to see that kind of tip back. And I'll talk about it a little bit, but we did just bring on a couple more local contractors. Everyone is in this program. We want to keep as much of this money local as we can, create local jobs or maintain local jobs with it. So things are looking a little bit better. At least contractors are now picking up the phone. So, okay, we'll move on. Uh, so, oh, these are just some of the caps, the program that really just matters if you're going to get into it. So we do have some caps. And and our contractors have to to meet those. But short story is, any home in the program can get up to twenty thousand dollars of work done if the initial audit says it's needed. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. So just here's an example. In Oak Ridge, we're doing a lot of panel upgrades. So a lot of homes have those old Zinsco panels, which are a fire hazard. So we can't even look at the ductless heat pump and putting one in until we get the panel upgraded. So that's great to be able to do that in homes. And here's an example of a ductless heat pump. And what we're finding with D H Ps is that it can mean less burning, especially in those shoulder seasons. So in the fall and in the spring, like right now, when it's kind of warm, people aren't having to start a fire. They're not having to use their wood and ductless heat pumps are really cheap. So it's not costing people usually more than three dollars a day. Okay, great. And then next slide. Oh, and ductless heat pumps offer air conditioning. That's really important. Just an example of before and after. All right, we'll keep going. Example of before and after, we do do pellet inserts, inserts, and we also can do fireplaces. Fireplaces put off tremendous amount of smoke. So if people have a fireplace and they'd want to get an insert, that's something we can do. All right. So why am I doing this? I have these slides here. That's why I downloaded this app when I went. Okay, where am I at? So, okay, our outreach coordinator, we were able to two point oh, fund that new position, which has been great, and doing some more outreach online. Our tech service is in partnership with El Rapa, which has been fantastic. We have so many more people who have signed up for a tech service. So we'll tell people when we're having, you know, bad smoke in the air, tell people when we're doing prescribed fire, and then also other important things. But it's not an enormous amount of texts. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is the reader boards. So we threw this grant and then another grant with D E Q. We're able to fund the new reader board that's down at the fire department right now. And then there's a little bit of funding left over, and we're going to be working with a school to put a reader board in, a second reader board, and then we'll have access to that reader board. So that'll be another really handy tool. And we're also talking about ways to make those reader boards be able to plug in in case we do have an emergency. And and we can put a generator on them or have some kind of backup power. So it'd be a way to share information with the community. And if you're not in our newsletter list, they're only electronic right now, but please do sign up or the text list. And if you need that information, I can share it with you. Okay, next slide. We can keep going. Examples of our newsletters and flyers and whatnot. All right, we can keep going. So I think what we're trying to share there is before we didn't even ask for a budget for that. So lessons learned. So the other big thing that we've been able to do in the last couple of years is we developed the smoke safety plan, which you guys just approved. And and this is a plan of how the agencies that do prescribed fire work together during prescribed for fire season. And that was the primary goal or the funding goal of that document. And it's been wonderful for prescribed fire. But also the other, you know, side benefits is we did a year round plan for smoke. And so it's just this document. It's available on our website, and you can see all the partners involved in this, and it gives all the background of how we got to here with attainment attainment issue, what the grant is and whatnot. So. Okay, we'll keep going. So here's an example of our text texting service and some of the information that comes out on it. Yeah, eight hundred seventy-three subscribers. So we're hitting like half the community, which is really cool. And then our community firewood program, this is another piece of the tag funding. And I I should say the community fire program started in twenty fifteen. And the city's been a major partner in that. And really what happened is early on, we recognized that it doesn't matter if people have certified wood stoves. If they don't have dry wood, you're going to create smoke. There's just no way around it. And we don't have a firewood vendor in town, an actual going business that's a vendor. So we have some people that do it on the side, but that's not enough to meet the need. So with partnering with the city, the Forest Service, and inbound and El Rapa, we got that program off the ground. And it just was never truly meeting the need. So we put it in this grant to give it some additional funding to buy some equipment to try and stand it up as a going endeavor. So the goal is to for the community firewood program to turn into a business that has a commercial firewood side that that actually keeps the business running and then still offers the cordwood. Because the business, we don't have enough cordwood that's sold in the community that would actually support a business standing alone. But if there was a commercial firewood side of it, then it does pencil. We do have a plan to that effect. So inbounds have been great partners on that. And and we've been able to increase our numbers every year. So one hundred and four, I think, right now, we're actually at one hundred and thirty-four. So this will be our highest year ever. And then the Cedar Creek Fire. Our November was crazy because so many people could not go out and get wood during the season they normally would. So a lot of people that don't normally buy wood, we're buying it. We do offer the wood at a reduced rate, and we want to keep that for as long as we can. But right now, that's grant funded through the the tag grant. All right. And if you get a chance, this slides, I guess it's not on here, but we got a great video about that, that Oregon Department of Forestry did about that program. Okay, next slide. Here's, this is actually inbound installing the wood sheds, but the high school builds the wood sheds, the inbound delivers them and puts the roof on. So this is a great program. We have funding for one hundred fifty sheds, and it's a, it's working with the local wood shop C T E program. And and the kids do these as projects for each quarter. And then we're looking at turning it, rolling it into some summer programs with a school adventures program. So and hopefully even paying the kids to do the work. But this is really awesome, just easy project for them to build some skills, and then we're getting those out in the community. So that's something, I'm surprised how many people say they don't need wood sheds, and maybe they just don't feel like they should take a wood shed. But these are one cordwood sheds, and we have a lot of funding. So we want people to take them. If you are using a tarp, let's get you a shed. So, okay. Um, the residential air purifiers. A long story short, we gave out the Oak Ridge Air Program gave out five hundred purifiers right off the bat when we first kicked off the program. And then this summer, or this after the Cedar Creek Fire, we're able to give out another eleven hundred. Lessons learned, we learned with our air purifier, the Winix we gave out was a great one, still going, and we still are giving people filters. The Honeywell, not so great. So if you got a Honeywell, you can come swap out and get a growth pure from us. We just, it's new technology, and it's a much better machine. But that was a great program, and them also paid for filtration at the high school and here at the library. But we like lessons learned, things you don't really think about. We put filtration in the school, but it only works in the winter time because the school's ducted air system is only running in the winter when the heat's running. They don't have a cooling system. So we don't have all the problems solved yet necessarily. All right, next slide. The code enforcement, so the Oak Ridge Air Program funds about eighty thousand dollars a year for a code enforcement officer. And so they've, these are the citations they've been issuing. So the officer does, you know, it's not necessarily going around ticketing. They do education. So if someone is creating smoke, then they can provide education around that. But that funding will continue for a couple more years. Eighty thousand, a position. It was about, the goal was for full F T E, but you know, prices go up, so we know it's not a full F T E now. Yep. Um, so the watershed council also, they get a little bit of funding to bring smoke education to the schools. They're working right now on outdoor school in May and doing some education, outdoor school. So. Next slide. Okay, Cedar Creek Fire, yeah. The same slide. Let's go next slide. I thought I had a separate Cedar Creek Fire one. Oh, maybe hit a couple more clicks on that one. Nope. Oh, go ahead and go back. I think yeah, if you're able to go back three, I think maybe just using the different, I created this on a Google platform, I think, putting up, we're missing some things. So yeah, Cedar Creek Fire. So what happened during Cedar Creek is Oregon Health Authority reached out and said, hey, could you use some purifiers? And we said, yeah, absolutely. We're buying down here. And they gave us a few and then a few more, and then a few more. In the end, we ended up with eleven hundred. And it was a huge push, but we were really grateful to have them. And we learned so much from that purifier, just the fact that people could see the air quality index on the purifier and see the difference of it. It was a great thing. We still have some left. So if you did not get one and you have Oregon, if you have O H P, Medicaid or Medicare, then we can get you a free purifier. All right, next slide. And then leverage funding. So the numbers, oh, they are here. They're just moved around. So one thing we wanted to point out is when you have funding, grant funding, you can leverage it for more funding. So we've been able to leverage these programs that are existent and bring in more funding for other programs. So what's really happened this last year is we've grown into doing fuels mitigation work. And the reason being is that wildfire wildfire is a huge part of our smoke issue. And and the E P A and El Rapa recognize now that the most smoke that we experience as a community, and especially in the last ten years, has been from wildfires. So finding ways to mitigate wildfires both through prescribed fire and doing fuels mitigation around our homes to make them safer, but then also finding ways to reduce the fuel load in the forests. So we've been able to bring in quite a bit of money over the last couple of years. I know at least in twenty-two, we had about five hundred thousand dollars come in to the the organization, go out to the community, and these are jobs in the community. So we're putting local contractors to work doing this work. And same thing with with the the work, we don't have the the funding come through the organization for the home heating upgrades. We just do the coordinating. But we've been able to bring on two more local contractors who are also helping to do that work. So that's super exciting. Okay, and I think then go ahead and we can go a couple more. So this is just a picture of the distribution of the purifiers. Like I said, it was a huge lift. I think we figured out, we ended up putting in twelve hundred volunteer and staff hours and getting those out over six weeks. And we had our board, and I was really grateful our board was able to do this because Oregon Health Authority is making us gather such, you know, like people's P P E or private information. So we couldn't just pull in any volunteers. And so it was a huge lift. And so we definitely shared that with them. We're really glad we got to do this. But you know, like capacity funding would be really good. So they've been having us go to like a lot of meetings and tell them, you know, what we learned, which is awesome. But it's great to be on their radar now, and it was a really good program. So that's just an example of of some of the purifiers and industrial purifiers that we're able to bring down as well. That's, that might be about it. So you can go one more. Oh, wildfire safety night. I just wanted to put that up there. Another thing that that the Oak Ridge Air event does, and you know, we had that wildfire safety night last year in July after the wettest June, and we're like, is anyone even going to believe us? And then we were evacuating like six weeks later. So it really is part of what we live with. So I think that's all I have. Is there any questions? Oh, and that's just some of our project boundary areas of where we're doing the work. And I can answer questions on that. People have them.
Any questions from the Zoom platform from Counsel Bjornson or Coker?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
I don't have a question, but Sarah, I just want to say you're amazing. Everything that you just presented to us is just a phenomenal amount of work, and I appreciate you and your whole team. So thank you.
It's been a team effort, and the city's been there right along the way. So yeah, I think this is very much something the pre, the city helped create and should be really proud of too. So yeah, it's good that we are able to do it, and it's good that we're able to continue to grow it. Right now, anyone in our zip codes, so which includes includes Westford. Yep. So we have a small stock of those left. We just have to meet those requirements with Medicaid Medicare. Yep, we, I should, just for folks online too. Unfortunately, we've learned through this, our air shed cuts off at Rock Road. So folks on High Prairie and Camp Six do not qualify for the home heating upgrades. We will still service them with a smaller stuff like the firewood and the wood sheds and the purifiers. But yeah, E P As, and and that's an act of Congress to move the arbitrary line that they drew for an air shed. Really disappointing.
Excellent, Sarah. Okay, moving on to nine point six, which is Westford Police and Fire I G A contracts intergovernmental agreements.
All right, so council should have in front of them the two contracts that we do every year with Westford for police services and fire protection services. This year, we raised their rates by slightly over five percent for each. So the fire contract is going from thirty-five thousand one ninety-one to thirty-seven thousand. And the police one is going from fifty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight to sixty thousand. We've really kind of accelerated their their payments in the last few years. For example, back in two thousand twenty-one, they were only paying thirty-six thousand six hundred and two for police. So that's almost doubled since then. And fire was at sixteen thousand eight hundred. That basically has doubled. So they they opened their books to me, and it's really only so much money we can get from them. And I think we've struck a fair bargain on on this. It's supported by our police chief, fire chief, and of course, the mayor of Westford has not passed their city council yet. This is part of the process that both city councils have to pass this intergovernmental agreement for these services. So I'm just looking for council's approval on these. And I just want to remind folks, I got a couple of messages saying they couldn't hear. Make sure your microphone is on and you're as close to it as possible. It sounds great when you are close, but as soon as you back away, it deteriorates.
Thanks, James. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the terms of the police and fire EMS services I G A contracts with the city of Westford for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counsel Charman, seconded by Counsel Kenyon. Discussion or questions of the staff?
I have one question. So I see in the in the agenda bill, it has the dollar amount, but then down here in the graph, it has, it looks like capital assets. I'm assuming those are indicated that they're essentially signed over to Oak Ridge. It's the right after the agenda bill. There's a blank page, and then it goes into property, things like radio chargers, a tick, turnout.
Yeah, no, that is a list of Westford owned equipment that's being used by the city of Oak Ridge. It requested that, so I got that from Scott. We are still welcome to use that, but they wanted a list, a list of that, of the items that that they procured through their grant process, et cetera.
So this is indicating that those items are still owned by the city of Westford?
Yes, but available for our use. The only time it would have to be turned over is if and when they do start their own fire department and are ready to go in that respect.
James, do you know the location of the Westford engine right now? Is it at the firehouse or is it over somewhere in Westford?
It's at the firehouse.
Okay. And I know the fire chief and police chief. Okay. And I know the fire chief and police chief support this. But do you think the anticipated costs of providing the service are met by those numbers in the contract? It's hard to estimate, I know.
Yeah, they're they're at least close. Yeah, the chiefs chiefs are okay with it. Obviously, we'd like more money. One thing we have done is that there, previously, there was a requirement of twenty hours of police patrol services. We had found that some months we were going way over that during investigations of certain cases. So what the bargain we struck is that we'll we'll no longer be required to do twenty hours a month. We'll simply be responding to calls. In hopes that it that it works out in the end. And there is a caveat in here that if the Westford mayor, police chief and myself believe that some incident took two hundred hours or something to investigate, that we will be compensated at certain rate, which was the average hourly rate of officers for any major overages.
And just as a footnote, the those increases in twenty twenty-one were actually incorporation of a, our, their version of the public safety fee into their contracts. Any other discussion? Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Tarmann?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
All right, motion passes on to nine point seven, which is Go Beyond Racing Oregon Two Hundred Partial Fee Waiver Request. James, are you presenting this or is Counselor Kenyon?
I am. All right, so this is, this is a two hundred mile foot race that is going on from August twenty-fifth to twenty-ninth. This will be the first year that it's, here in Oak Ridge, first day they requested some funding. They anticipate this event will cost them approximately fifty-five thousand dollars to put on. The cost alone to rent the park just for the rental is five thousand dollars. They're asking for fee waiver request of two thousand five hundred of those fees. I I think it is certainly appropriate, being that this is the first time we want to help them make this successful so they can have it every year here. And I had, I talked to Counselor Kenyon, Chair of the R T M P Committee. And and we came to the conclusion that since our R T M P funds are dwindling at this point, rather than doing what we've done in the past, transferring the rental fees into the parks using the R T M P funds, that simply requesting a waiver would be more appropriate. That way it doesn't diminish our existing R T M P funds. They anticipate there'll be about three hundred people. About two hundred runners, you know, I think a hundred and fifty runners and then a hundred and fifty support people, families, et cetera. It'll be pretty light use because they'll be running every day. So this really, most of the action will be at the beginning of the event when they start and at the end when people are returning. So it's not a huge footprint on the park. And again, I, my personal opinion, staff opinion, like to see them succeed. So we're requesting this fee waiver request to help them.
Thanks, James. Do I, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve waiving two thousand five hundred dollars of the five thousand dollar Green Waters Park rental fee for the twenty twenty-three Go Beyond Racing Oregon Two Hundred Race.
Your second?
I second.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Hooker, seconded by Counselor Hollitt. Discussion or questions, staff?
I was, I was just curious what the current balance of the R T M P is.
Not, almost nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's eight thousand five hundred, something like that. We do expect more funding to come in around November.
Does that nine thousand include everything we've already committed to?
Have everything, everything we've already committed to, yeah.
Any other questions? And a couple, let's see. Comments, really. So I think this shows the weakness of the rolling application period for R T M P. Where before we used to have a due date, everyone would turn in their requests. You could rack and stack, you could apportion it properly so you didn't get short on R T M P funds. And now they're welcome to submit at any time during the year, and sometimes you'll get surprises. That said, I'm really opposed to not transferring R T M P to the city parks fund. It robs the parks fund of critical revenue that they would have obtained if they had not. So I'm opposed to it, but we'll see how the vote goes. Any other questions? Jackie, call for a vote, please. Let me state the motion. Motion was to approve waiving twenty-five hundred dollars of the five thousand Green Waters Park rental fee for the twenty twenty-three Go Beyond Racing Oregon Two Hundred Race. Jackie?
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Nay.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Tarmann?
Nay.
All right, motion carries on to nine point eight, the Circle Bar Golf Club Parade Permission for Golf Carts.
All right, council is the road authority and the one of the entrances and entries for the parade, tree planting festival parade will be golf carts from the golf club. And they need council's permission to be able to drive them on city streets down to the parade route like they did last year. They've assured me they will do so safely, similar manner that they used last year, having a lead regular car in the front and the back as they make their way down from the golf course and back up afterwards.
Okay, thank you. I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to allow golf carts to be driven from the Circle Bar Golf Club to the high school on May sixth for the tree planting festival parade.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Tarmann, seconded by Counselor Coker, I believe. And any discussion or questions? Counselor Kenyon?
Do side by sides to ride on our city streets, do the golf carts not count under that?
Correct, they they don't count. There it's, it gets complicated, but yeah, they're not considered side by side.
Okay.
Any other questions? Jackie, would you call for a vote after I read this motion? A mo- motion was to allow golf carts to be driven from the Circle Bar Golf Club to the high school on May sixth for the tree planting festival parade. Jackie?
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Tarmann?
Aye.
All right, motion carries on to nine point nine, which I guess we'll call it the pump track agenda item.
Yeah, so the parks and community services have been working on a few things. And one of them is the asphalt pump track, which Jason Neimer and Tom Lyons have been pretty much them working on it. So we're just bringing everybody's attention that it's been approved by the committee to move forward to look at in the future, bringing a motion forward to the city. Jason and Tom showed up today. If anybody has any questions about it, with the council's approval, to answer those questions.
Great. Anyone in the council have questions? Counselor Hooker?
I am very ignorant when it comes to this. What is it?
Generally, a, a loop or an oval type or a variation of the sort. And the idea is to use your your body mechanics and your bicycle, skateboard, scooter, whichever vehicle you prefer. Using your body motion to pump and generate momentum around the track. So it's a variation of kind of pump rollers and berms usually seen in like a B M X track. But it's a completely different layout. It's not, it can be for racing. There is a racing element of it. There's a whole industry around it, but it's also a huge family activity. It's something that all levels of skill level and experience can ride and enjoy.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Got one. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
I just wondered, I I read through this and there was something about a possibility of a smaller track. I think at Salmon Creek Park, but I wondered why, or maybe it was considered to use the existing pump track area that we have and what what happened there with not deciding not to use that?
Sorry to interrupt, but we can't hear online. And if counselors need to vote on this, I assume they need to be hearing this. We can't hear anything.
Can't, council is hearing it just fine. I really apologize that it's not going through Zoom very well. Apparently, we just learned the microphone isn't working that he had.
Is this one working, Vanessa?
Vanessa, can you hear them now?
I don't think she can hear me, huh?
That that sounds better. I just assume Counsel Bjornson and Counsel Coker would like to hear.
I can hear him.
You're actually cutting out Vanessa.
It might be your connection.
No, I couldn't hear either.
Can you hear me okay now?
I can.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead. No.
Now, there's no vote, so I don't think it's really, we need to repeat verbatim.
Yeah, we we really just wanted to introduce. We really just wanted to kind of just introduce this to council, no vote needed, just just to kind of, so you don't hear rumors about this in the community. And so you know where it's coming from and what we got going on. But Tom was about to explain why Diamond View wasn't exactly the ideal location. And it's basically because of the size of Diamond View. It's not, sense of pavilions been put in and a few other things. It's just, it's just gotten cut down in size for the, that would be for that. And also the railroad crossings illegal there. And yeah, we got Salmon Creek as a location for a more community based one. And I'm gonna let Tom talk about the other location. Thank you, Jason. The other location, it kind of fits really in the grander scope, what we would like to bring to the community. A large scale pump track that is going to bring a unique presence to the community. It's also going to drive tourism. There is some large pump tracks around Oregon, but nothing designed with competition in mind. I know talking to Velo Solutions, they would like to build something like that in the state so we could bring national level qualifying and races to the area. Help build that community and scene and bring tourism to, and money to our our town. As well as something that would really utilize and focused on our community.
Right. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So these two sites that you have, is it kind of an either or, or are you pursuing them both?
It could be an either or, or it could be both. In terms of funding, these are not cheap. That's the thing, you know. For the Salmon Creek one, it would be more community based. It would be more, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be necessarily a draw for tourism necessarily. It could be, it could be kind of a fun little track for people to hang out on, especially with the connectedness. So basically what's going on with this going from the east side of Oak Ridge with the canal trail that's coming in, this could be a really cool feature to have for for families and stuff, just for people to enjoy. So this is either way, even if it's at the Old Mill site or O I P site or at the Salmon Creek site, it works out great for that stuff. And but yeah, just just the Salmon Creek one would be more community based. It might even be a different builder that would come in to do it. There's a guy, a company in Eugene that does it as well. They're just not, they aren't a large scale pump track developer. Whereas Vela Solutions, if they came in, yeah, they would, they'd want to probably build something kind of more world class. So.
I really like the idea of the one on the the O I P.
We do too.
Be huge. I kind of grew up in the B M X world as a kid, so that that looks really fun. I am curious also about the Salmon Creek one. Is there planning for parking? If that is the the route you guys pursue, because we, you know, we've had a lot of stuff going on that street, the history. And so parking is my concern for that one.
Yeah, well, the parking would be the existing parking kind of, and it is on a dead end there. So not necessarily, but it's something that the community could, kids could bike to, people could go to, like, not necessarily park there. But they can come from their house and and go to. So that would be more based on that. There is a fair amount of parking at Salmon Creek, but you're right, I understand what you mean. And yeah.
Well, thank you. I'm excited to see where you guys go with it.
Yeah, yeah, we've, we're, we've, yeah, we're going places, I think.
Just one more quick question on. Is this, it looks like this is the area that everybody's been talking about anyhow. Is that the same thing?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was that area.
Yeah, one other thing I just wanted to mention really quickly is the low maintenance need for this type of development. It's asphalt. You're not going to have to mow it. You're not going to have to like do much, you know. I mean, I don't know if the city spends much time mowing that area that by is by Salmon Creek there. I don't know. It's just a big grass field. But they won't have to anymore. So yeah, just to add that to it as well.
Thanks, Jason and Tom.
Oh, I was just gonna add, I'm, if you're ever going through Redmond on Highway ninety-seven, you can see one of the ones that Velo Solutions built right there off the highway. It's usually covered in children and lots of people. And then I've also been to the one up in Leavenworth, Washington. They built one, but they made sure it was a internationally certified racetrack. And now they have the largest world or largest international race in the world. And they're smaller than us. Well, they were.
Does the committee envision just leveling Diamond View and plenty of grass? You still have it operating as a?
The idea for the OIP pump track space is, has it already been talked about to include parking in that area? So you've, you've, you're asking for enough space to provide the parking that would be needed for a world-class racetrack?
That was, that's definitely part of the conversation with Velo Solutions, want to know what they need as far as parking and amenities to get something like this done. That was definitely part of the decision to start with Salmon Creek that already had parking and some of that infrastructure there. With this, this other lot, it, the main thing is we have space for it. It's a good lot. There's plenty of room to do that kind of stuff moving forward. We're kind of at that point now, solidifying some of those details and getting to see exactly what we would need. To move forward with that dedicated parking bathrooms, et cetera. But the main thing is we have the potential to do it. We have the size. We have a nice flat open area to develop for that.
All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to 10.1, this is business from the city administrator. The 10.1 is Lane County Rural Roads Community Survey. James?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point this out to folks that there's a survey that Lane County is putting out through the end of the month. They want to hear from rural residents through this survey to help them make decisions on where to focus their funding for projects such as shoulder widening. They've identified, I think it was McFarland and High Prairie as a couple of possibilities. And they just kind of want to see what residents want. So the survey is available on the city website. And there's flyers either on that shelf right there with other surveys or right outside. It's got one of those QR codes. Is that the right?
Yes.
Thank you. Showing my age there. It has a QR code you can scan in, or you can pick up the flyer and type in the website. And you could win an e-bike or a gift card. But the, the surveys, they may seem silly, but they actually do become parts of studies and they are important. So I encourage people to, to have your voices heard.
Thanks. Any questions with staff? Okay.
Oh, quick question. Can you add this to our Facebook page and or our city website to encourage participation?
Well, I personally can't. That's another issue. I, we're having trouble getting onto that page, but we do have some folks that do have access to our Facebook page. So yes, we can put that, I'll remind Jackie. I'm reminding Jackie right now. So we'll get that done. Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I made a note.
Next is you, James, on the dispatch update.
Yeah, not a whole lot to report, except things are still moving forward with that. In fact, tomorrow, the tech team is going out there to see what it's going to take and give us a price on that. Again, we assume that will just be a few thousand dollars, a couple thousand, whatever. But under 10 to get the tech part done and still working on the contract. And I'll continue to update council as I have more information.
Okay, and.
What do you mean by tech? Do you, does that include like an upgrade or are you talking about what was mentioned where we might need an upgrade to?
Oh, the fiber stuff. No, it's just the, the phones, phone systems have to be set up so that instead of ringing to Lane County Dispatch, they will ring to Junction City Dispatch.
Oh.
Yeah. So that's.
Okay, so it's like a.
Pretty minimal charge. It's kind of like changing your phone number.
But the whole city.
Kind of, yeah, yeah.
The whole area, I'm assuming, Westford, High Prairie, all, everyone up here would have. You know, like if someone on High Prairie wanted to call 911, their call is going to go to Junction City if we, if we proceed with this contract, right?
Correct. Yeah, they would be the ones eventually answering it. But everything else will stay the same. The police department's phone number will stay the same.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 9.3 WAC Electrical Panel bids update.
All right. So similar to last meeting, I just finished up giving the last tour on that. And believe I've identified the, the best bidder on that. So that, that's going to take place very soon. The, the panel itself has to be ordered and that will be the longest wait. Could, could take up to a month, I'm told, to get those parts.
And 10.4, I'm sorry, any questions on that?
Just real quick, do you have any idea of ballpark range where?
$4,000. Which is great because we thought it would take up to 10.
Very good. Thank you.
10.4 is the WAC Architect update.
Yeah, so we received three really excellent applications to be the, the WAC Architect. Really impressive. It was hard to choose because I would have, I would have chosen any one of the three. But Kurt Wilson of Wilson Architecture ended up winning that by vote of the WAC Subcommittee on the 13th. And he's been notified that he has won that contract. I will be negotiating the finer details with him on Monday. And then we, we will get rolling.
Great. Questions about the architect? Okay, 10.5 Cedar Creek Fire 2022 Internal After Action Report.
Yes, so Sarah Altimus Pope is here again to explain some of this. Again, appreciate her support in getting this done. I took, I took part in some of this, some of the meetings afterwards and co-sponsored by the University of Oregon Center for Science and Communication Research. And if there are any specific questions, I think Sarah could answer them.
Yeah, it was, it was a good read and there's an executive summary that really kind of gets straight to the point. So I encourage everyone to, to read that. Is it available to the public somewhere?
Willie, that's a good question. If, if it hasn't been, then I see no reason why it couldn't be. Okay, yeah, we will definitely get this posted. And I'm sure Jackie's making note of that, too.
All right. Next is Lane County Public Safety Levy Measure 2340 and Lane County Sheriff's Office Info Session at the Oak Ridge High School tomorrow.
So again, Counselor Kenyon already kind of announced this. It's tomorrow, 6:30 PM at the high school. There are two info sheets about this and they are located on the table right outside. If folks want more information, otherwise the sheriff will be here tomorrow night to explain it further and answer any questions. I plan to attend and hope to see you there.
Yeah, and I spoke with one of his deputies today and he said he just finished up doing his road show at Crestwell and was well received and very informative. So I encourage anyone to come out and ask questions of Sheriff Harold. All right, 10.7 is the Willamette National Forest and Ubra Volunteer Cleanups on Friday and Saturday.
Yeah, so there's a lot going on this weekend, starting tomorrow at 11:00 AM. As Eugene mentioned, Ubra is doing volunteer cleanup of our uptown area. Folks are encouraged to bring shovels, rakes, implements of destruction, whatever your favorite tool is and, and help out with that. That'll be from 11 to 2 on Friday and, sorry, yes, 11, yeah, 11 to 2 Friday and Saturday for that. Then the Forest Service is having their cleanup event at 11:00 AM on, just on Saturday. That one starts at CT Beach, they use area. And they will be providing litter bags, et cetera, and and that, that, it's actually Earth Day on Saturday. That's why they're doing it. So you can get more information by going to the Forest Service website, Ubra's website, and hope to have people involved in that. Oh, I'm sorry. The Uber one starts at 10:00 AM each day. So Uber is Friday and Saturday at 10:00 AM. Forest Service is 11:00 AM on Saturday at CT Beach.
Thank you. Any questions about that?
Just a quick question as for Rick, actually, isn't your painting project this weekend as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that part of a later update or?
I'm sorry?
Is that going to be another update later in this meeting or should we touch on that right now?
I did not have an update for that, but you more than welcome to ask questions. So far the update is we are moving forward as planned. So.
Oh, I just kind of meant like we're talking about activities people can participate in and the painting is one of them. So what day and time are you doing?
22nd, 8 o'clock.
Is that Sunday or Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday. Thank you.
And we're meeting at City Hall Front Lawn at 8 o'clock. By that time we should have the roads closed already. Public Works has already cleaned the areas, I'm assuming. I haven't gone on check, but they told me they were getting, gonna have that ready for Saturday. So everything is moving forward as planned. See how many people show up to be on.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, they want, anybody who wants to paint or help block off roads and I'll let you talk. Sorry.
Yeah. Anybody who wants to help show up, absolutely. We are, we are in need of volunteers who do, are familiar with mixing paint or are artists by nature. I definitely don't want to say anybody's not an artist, but we could definitely use a better showing of artists from the community. There's, it's kind of been radio silence for most of them. So, but we'll do what we can. If we don't get them all done with these two weekends, we will continue on as that'll just come back for more street closures until we get it done.
And had, had you already reached out then to the local art community, the arts counselor?
Yes, I reached out to them in person during the Friday Art Walks. And then it's been put on social media.
Excellent.
Been brought up here multiple times.
Right. Thank you, Rick.
All right.
I was going to mention there's a small chance it could be rained out, but last time I checked, the weather looks good so far.
We're now to Staff and Board Committee Commission Reports. It'd be staff reports. 11.1 Finance Report. Anything to open up with, Colleen? Okay.
So I had an issue with this lovely ancient system that we currently are working with. So if you see some like negative numbers on the finance report, I will get to those. What happened was I was doing some cleanup, some journal entries. They got stuck in the system. So I didn't realize that they were doing that. And then so I had to get on the phone with Cassell's on the phone for over an hour. They had to undo everything, redo everything. So some stuff was duplicated. So I apologize if there's a few wacky things on there, but I will have to get that cleaned up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions of Colleen? Counselor Kenyon?
I actually have quite a few, and I wanted to start by pointing out that I have noticed in the last two months, a lot of great, excellent changes to the finance report. New lines that have been added in and probably you've caught up on a lot of journal entries because there's just a lot of information I thought would have been there a while ago, but it's there now and it's very comforting to see that. Also, I wanted to point out though that one of the things that confused me was, maybe this is part of what your problem you just mentioned, is that the salary on, in the general fund or the administration fund, we have a line called Assistant Planner. The amount that's like in last month's report has gone way down. Like, did you take money back?
Yeah. So what I was trying to do was.
Okay. Okay. So that'll be get sorted out in the future. And then this isn't specific to you, but I did want to point out to the council that unless, unless Colleen can verify that something's wrong on that line, fines and forfeitures continues over the last several years to just keep going down, down, down. I remember four or five years ago, very well that the community court, that's kind of how I, I look to see if it's paying for itself. And it, and it used to consistently, we would always kind of mark more than what it costs to run that fund. Now we're actually at less than half of what it costs to run that fund. So I'm thinking it's something that the council needs to be thinking about and maybe even forming some kind of subcommittee to really do a deep dive and consider, is it worth it? You know, it's time to start talking about that. Also noticed that the public safety fee, we've actually received more than what we had budgeted for this year, which I, I always like seeing that we have more money than we thought we were going to. But the emergency services fund, the amount that's being transferred isn't equal to half of what we've received so far. So I wondered if that's something you're looking at too.
We can't hear you, Colleen. Sorry.
Do you, do you have that mic that wasn't working? Oh, here. Do you want to pass mine down?
Can you hear me now? Yes, thank you. Okay. So that, that line item, when you see that in the year today actual column, you have to realize that that is what we have billed out. That isn't necessarily what has come in. So it's a receivable, right? I think we've gone over this before. So.
You might have to remind me a lot then. Wow.
Yeah, yeah.
I forgot all about that.
Yeah, and that's why I have to pull separate reports to show what's actually come in. And I can do that and I can bring that to the next, with the next financial report, if that's something that would be helpful to see.
Definitely, in my opinion, it would be helpful. I'd like to actually be able to look at, I guess I wouldn't even be interested in the report we're getting if that's not what we're actually receiving.
Yeah, well.
What about all the other lines?
Well, because that's a, normally when we bill somebody out, we get paid for it, correct?
Right, right, right.
This is something that we're billing out, but not everybody's willing to or are paying for it. So that's, that's the difference in there. So we still have about a certain percentage of people that are not paying. Yeah.
So then I would ask, maybe we consider requesting every month, an update on what the current amount received is on.
Sure, yeah, because I have to do whole nother reports for that.
Addition. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. That was all I had. Oh, no, it's not. I'm sorry. This other page. We have been asked by our auditors to make sure that what I'm about to ask makes it into our minutes that we're regularly asking these kinds of questions of our finance department. So the first question is, are our books balanced and reconciled? Re, did I say that right? Reconciled?
Your mic's off again. So I think we're about February right now for those, just because we've gotten behind with the budget stuff. So.
Reconciled. Okay, good. And are all cash and investment accounts reconciled to the? And are all cash and investment accounts reconciled to the general ledger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Last question is, does the adopted budget reflect expected expenditures?
Yes. The one that we're in now, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, it seems to be pretty close. Yeah.
Right, okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Thanks, Colleen. We'll move on to police. Is the chief online? Doesn't look like it, but.
I believe Chief Martin may be online.
Hi, Chief.
Can you guys?
Yeah, you're up.
Okay, uh. Mayor, council and citizens, the Oak Ridge Police Department report from March is. Uh, first in training, we went to Sergeant Madsen and I went to Northwest Leadership Seminar, which is a leadership. Training thing to help us get our hours. We have to get in every three-year DPSST training cycle. Several of the staff's been doing EMR training with our partners, the Fire Department. Uh, we attended some, did some de-escalation training with the Wayne County Sheriff Department. Two of the full-time officers resurfaced on smoke school. Uh, we did coffee with the cop, March fourteenth at Main Street Coffee around the corner. That was a nice event. Uh, some of the officers been playing basketball with the kids at Open Gym. We had thirty-four cases and three hundred and thirty-three incidents. And then there's a breakdown. Of Oak Ridge cases with thirty-two and two hundred and seventy-five incidents. Westford cases was two. With thirty-two incident reports and twenty-two point five contract hours. And Lowell was zero major case reports with twenty-six incident reports and fifty-one contract hours. And then if I could, Mayor, real fast, uh. Maybe do a little follow-up on the dispatch.
Sure.
Uh, just, just to clarify to everyone, uh, nine-one-one calls will not go to Junction City. They still go to Central Lane, which is Eugene PD. They're the PSAP for our area, so that won't change. What will change is the business calls from the city of Oak Ridge will go to. So our phones, there'll be a phone tree and they'll be able to go to Junction City. And then the equipment change we need is actually some lines that go from Oak Ridge to a. Lumen Hub, used to be Century Tel and Eugene, and those then go to Lane County now. They'll, those will be switched over to Junction City and that's what we. Have our techs going in this, or actually it's tomorrow, Day Wireless is going in to. Check on the equipment needs to get those phone lines from the hub to Junction City to integrate into Junction City and then make our radio system work.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions to Chief Martin?
Thank you. I have a few questions. Um, you've got them listed as major cases. Is it just cases?
Yeah, that's case reports and then incident. Yes. So major cases is case reports and incident reports is incident reports.
Okay, the reason I'm asking, because it says total major cases are thirty-four. So what kind of cases are they?
That would be like burglaries or assaults or that's your typical where somebody goes to jail for.
Okay, so we actually, we actually had thirty-four of those?
Yes. So thirty-two for Oak Ridge and two for Westford.
Right, okay. And then the incident reports, is that any call that comes into the police department? Or anybody that walks up to the police department, or is that? Is that something like that takes a police officer themselves to do something for that?
That's, that's just a call. So when someone calls or stops by or uh. That would generate the incident report.
Okay.
Well, so incident reports can turn into case reports.
Right, right. Okay.
Yeah, but someone has to physically type something in. So if someone just calls Michael and asks, is the highway open? She doesn't necessarily write that up.
Right, right. Okay. Um, one thing, and I don't know about everybody else, but I think especially now with budget season. Upon us. Um, I think it's important to have maybe just a little bit more detail report in that. Personally, I would like to see where, for instance, how many traffic citations or warnings in Oak Ridge, not Lowell. Or ordinance violation citations, warnings in Oak Ridge. That type of thing. It doesn't have to be, you know, I mean, every call that comes in, but I think. I think people need to know how busy you guys are on what you're doing. That will help maybe encourage them to give a little more money or not give a little more money, but. I think it's important for them to know that. That's all I have.
Okay.
Um, I did, but I've already forgotten it. So I'll. I'll get it another time.
I just wanted to echo what Counselor Hooker stated about um, knowing a little bit more detail on the calls. I mean, something simple like a pie chart or something just to show our citizens and us a little bit more. Um, that it's not just, law enforcement is not just about issuing traffic tickets. Um, there's so much else that goes into it. And if you're not listening to a scanner. You have no idea. Even when you are listening to a scanner, you really don't know.
Chief, are you still publishing the blotter on the Highway Fifty-Eight Herald?
Uh, yes.
So that does have more detail, but not, maybe not everything we're looking for here, but yes.
But that's also something that everybody gets.
Do as we change.
You're breaking up. You're breaking up.
Sorry, you're breaking up.
That's something we can probably integrate in. And as we switch to our new dispatch, we should have some easier pieces to pull data from that we don't have now.
Good point.
Oh, I remembered my question.
Counselor Kenyon?
So on the dispatch part of it, you touched on um. The difference between what um, what we're actually going to be updating, but. I was confused on the part where you talked about a nine-one-one call is still gonna go, is it? Still gonna go to Lane County Sheriff if we get the um. If we get the contract with Junction City? Is that what you said?
No, nine-one-one calls go to Central Lane, which is Eugene Police Department. They're the PSAP, which is the uh, nine-one-one answering center, just like they do now. So right now Eugene transfers those to Lane County and going into the future, they'll be transferring those to uh, Junction City for people who live. Inside the city limits of Oak Ridge and Westford. All the others. So the others, like if High Prairie calls, it will still go to Lane County.
I see. Now I'm following. Thank you. I understand.
Yeah, I was worried that might confuse people, but because it's gonna be the same as it is now where. If I call nine-one-one right now, it goes to the nine-one-one center and then it goes to Lane County Dispatch.
Right.
In the future, it'll still go to Central Lane, nine-one-one center, but then go to Junction City Dispatch. Yeah.
Okay.
So I know it's a little confusing, but yes, technically, technically it goes to nine-one-one center first, but that's the way it is now and that's the way it will be.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, eleven point three is the fire chief. Are you, are you there, Chief?
I'm here. Good evening, everybody. Um. So for March uh, training, um, I will be going to the Oregon Fire Chiefs Association Conference next week. Um, it's been fully funded by a scholarship, uh, which includes the hotel. Uh, we did host a sixteen-hour fire officer, one-level training uh, on decision-making. Uh, when you're first arriving on scene, and we had people attend from Oak Ridge, Dexter and Lowell. Uh, the class was essentially put on for free by Steve Abel, who's doing our um. Feasibility study for fire district. New members were continuing to receive new applications for volunteer and part-time staff. Uh, currently, we do have enough part-time staff that we are not going to accept any more applications unless. Uh, it's a paramedic level application. Uh, our new reader board is up and operational. We're working on content for that. It's a little bit of a learning curve putting those up, but uh, we're making some progress. Uh, right now, we're looking at replacing our uh, old carpet in the station. Uh, repairing our bay doors. We've been having some major issues with them and putting up security fencing and this will be purchased through ARPA funds. Uh, we're also adding a media system, uh, which is a smart board. Looks like it is, um, it's an eighty-six inch screen that we'll be able to utilize for uh, Hazel Dell Board Meetings, Training. And it could also be a great tool for uh, the OC should we ever need it. Um, the Oregon Health Authority will be here this month to inspect the ambulance service. Uh, they go through our records of facilities and ambulances and just to make sure that we're being compliant. With all the rules and regulations that um. They mandate us to do. On grants, we did receive a notification that we received the apparatus grant to the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office. Uh, we are getting a type-three wildland engine. Um, they did have a hundred and ninety-two applications and only twenty-seven type-three engines were awarded out of those applications. It will take approximately one year to build, so we should have it by this time next year. And we're still waiting to hear on the staffing grant. And if you look in your packet, there is a picture of. Uh, something very similar to what our engine will look like.
Oh, okay.
And um, you all have the activity report in your packet. Um, the only thing that I would really like to point out on there is uh, we're having. Pretty good increases on our volunteer participation. Uh, it's good to see that we are having volunteers attend training and signing up for shifts. It's a huge benefit to the department. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions to the fire chief? Okay, moving on to Public Works. Robert, on the line?
Yeah, uh, Mayor, Council and Citizens, uh, for the month of March, Public Works. Distributed sixteen point four million gallons of water, uh, treated twenty-three point eight million gallons of wastewater, performed. Forty-three service orders, twelve locates, uh, had one wastewater repair that was a plug main, but no damages. And zero water leaks. Other tasks performed was equipment, equipment maintenance and repair, street sweeping and pothole. Repairs as well as alley maintenance, park maintenance and installed picnic table at Horton Park. Also opened restrooms at Diamond View and Salmon Creek Parks. Storm systems, drainage and hillside maintenance, water meter repair and replacement, uh, red meters and dealt with past delinquent due accounts. And this uh, report is brought to you by our maintenance supervisor, Robert Crispin.
Thanks, Rick. Counselor Kenyon?
Brought to you by. Um, I wanted to ask real quick if you know um. Last year, last fall, I think it was, we had an INI project that we did to try and help prevent us from. Utilize or treating as much water as we have been in the past. How has that worked in reducing our treat, what we're treating?
The best estimates are about ten percent, but unfortunately, the rain patterns have not really been accurate enough to really get a true solid number.
Okay.
But are at current, we're, we're estimating about ten percent of a reduction.
And is that kind of what you expected or did you, okay?
Yeah, that, yeah. But again, the rain patterns from the previous years.
Yeah.
Have been sporadic, so we can't. It's difficult to come with a solid number.
Over time, we'll see it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Public Works? Okay, moving on to thirteen, which is ordinances and resolutions. Thirteen point one. ODAC Resolution Zero Three dash twenty twenty-three, second reading.
All right, so we are on the second reading for the Oak Ridge Economic Development Advisory Committee Resolution Number Three Dash Two Thousand Twenty-three.
Okay. Uh, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve and adopt Resolution Zero Three Dash Two Zero Two Three after the second reading.
Your second? Made by Counselor Hooker, second by Counselor Hollitt. Um, any discussion on this? Everyone happy with it? Okay, so we'll take a vote and then we will read the resolution. But uh, first, the motion was to approve and adopt Resolution Zero Three Dash Twenty Twenty-three after the second reading. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Mayor Kutchin?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt? Counselor Tomlin?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
I think Scott's mic is on.
Motion passes. All right, reading of the ordinance. You want to do first?
Sure.
We got others to do.
Yes, we do. All right. All right, Resolution Three Dash Two Thousand Twenty-three, a resolution repealing and replacing Resolution Sixteen Dash Twenty Twenty. The City of Oak Ridge Economic Development Advisory Committee. Whereas the City of Oak Ridge Council desires to repeal and replace the previous Economic Development Advisory Committee Resolutions, the previous ODAC operating guidelines. And whereas the purpose and scope of the Oak Ridge Economic Development Advisory Committee, ODAC, is an advisory body to the city council and city staff by providing recommendations concerning economic development within the city of Oak Ridge to improve the economy. Now therefore be it resolved by the Oak Ridge City Council as follows. Section one, Establishment Membership. The Oak Ridge Economic Development Advisory Committee is hereby established. The committee shall consist of seven voting members. Six citizens at large, at least four must reside within Oak Ridge city limits. Up to two may reside outside city limits, but must live within the nine-seven-four-six-three or nine-seven-four-nine-two zip codes. And one city counselor who will only vote in the event of a tie. Non-voting members include the city administrator, community development director and chamber of commerce representative. No staff member may apply as a voting citizen member if they are assigned to the committee as a non-voting member by the city administrator or per resolution. The committee will, at its first meeting in January of each year or at any point during the year by simple majority vote, elect a chair, vice chair and secretary from the voting and non-voting members. Section two, Terms. The citizen-at-large members of the committee shall be appointed for three-year staggered terms. Members shall be appointed to a seat for less than three years if an appointee is filling a vacant seat. In which a previous member resigned. The city councilor representative shall serve for their elected term. Seat appointments will follow the outlined years.
James, if the council's okay with it, I think we can avoid stating all these dates if you're okay. There are available.
Absolutely.
Okay. Section three then.
Section three, Quorum. A quorum may be present in, a quorum must be present in order to convene. Four voting members of the committee shall constitute a quorum. A simple majority vote from the voting members in attendance at a meeting of the committee shall be required to take any action. Section four, Responsibilities. The responsibilities of the Economic Development Advisory Committee shall be as follows. One, regular meetings of the committee should occur monthly. Special meetings may be called by the chair with appropriate notice. No decisions shall take place outside of the committee meetings. Committee, number two, committee members shall receive no compensation, but shall be reimbursed for duly authorized expenses prior. After prior approval from the city administrator. The committee shall have no authority to obligate the city for payment of any sums of money. Three, no member of the committee shall participate in any committee proceedings, action or vote in which any of the following has a direct or substantial financial interest. Member or the spouse, brother, sister, child, parent, father-in-law, mother-in-law, or the member. Any business in which the member is then serving or has served within the. Previous two years, or any business with which the member is negotiating or has an arrangement or understanding concerning prospective partnership or employment. Any actual or potential conflicts of interest shall be disclosed at the commencement of the meeting of the committee where the proceedings, action or vote is being taken. Four, when requested by city council or the city administrator, the committee will assist in the vetting process of specific projects and leads. The city administrator will delegate tasks to the committee members individually and confidentially. All members, all members vetting notes shall be marked confidential with the member's name and date. All notes shall be turned into the city administrator for confidential record-keeping and will not. All notes shall be turned into the city administrator for confidential record-keeping and will not be made available or released to the public. When ready, the ODAC committee shall hold an executive session under ORS-one-ninety-two-point-six-six-zero-two-E to deliberate over their findings and come to a consensus for their recommendation to city council. The city administrator will draft a written recommendation to take to city council an executive session or regular session as appropriate at his or her discretion. Other activities within the scope of the committee as assigned by city council, sorry, that is point-five. Point-six, keep records of minutes for each meeting per ORS-one-ninety-two-point-six-five-zero. Seven, an annual report will be completed in the fourth quarter of the calendar year. Eight, reports or recommendations of the ODAC shall be in writing, considered advisory in nature, and shall not be binding on the city council. Section Five, Conduct. All members are expected to attend meetings regularly, support the ODAC when requested, and abide by the Oak Ridge City Charter, the Oak Ridge Code of Conduct, Resolution Eighteen-Dash-Two-Zero-One-Five, and this resolution. A member of the committee may be removed from the committee by the city council for misconduct or nonperformance of duties at the request of the committee members via simple majority vote. A voting member who misses three consecutive meetings without reasonable cause shall be considered nonperforming. Absences known in advance should be communicated to the chairperson as soon as possible. This resolution becomes effective thirty days after it is passed by the council.
Thanks, James. Uh, we're gonna do an audible, given that the time and that there are citizens here that came to be appointed to committees, so we're gonna move to section fifteen, appointments. So we're here to consider applicants for these respective committees, commission board appointments, and appoint a city council member to the ODAC. And we have three citizen volunteers. Um, if uh do I hear a motion on fifteen-point-one?
I got a motion. I move we appoint Sarah Ultimus Pope, seat three of the ODAC, for a term expiring December twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Tommen, seconded by Counselor Hollitt. Any questions of Sarah? Counselor Kenyon?
Actually, not a question for Sarah, it's for James.
Okay.
In the resolution that you just read, I just want to know if I misheard you, but it doesn't say that if someone has a conflict, they cannot be a member of the committee?
No, it's they must declare it at the start of the committee meeting when it's being discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Great. Um, the motion was to appoint Sarah Ultimus Pope to seat three of the ODAC for a term expiring in December twenty-twenty-five. Got a question?
Um, just a statement. I definitely support Sarah Ultimus. I was on the ODAC committee with her before. She's a great asset to the commu- committee and brings a lot to the table, so I do really hope she is appointed.
Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Tommen?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Welcome aboard, Sarah.
Thank you for being patient with us.
Is Mr. Winkelman in the audience? Yes, sir. Okay, can I hear a motion on fifteen-point-two? I move we appoint James Winkelman to seat one of the RTMP TRT Committee for a term expiring in December twenty-twenty-five and to seat one of the Planning Commission for a term expiring in December twenty-twenty-six.
I'll second both of those, or all of that.
Okay, motion made by me, seconded by Counselor Kenyon. Any questions for Mr. Winkelman? Or the staff?
I have a comment versus a question. Thank you so much for attending our RTMP TRT Committee meeting last night. Even though you weren't appointed, I could tell that you are going to be an excellent asset to our committee. So, looking forward to uh having you join us, and I hope that the council agrees.
Absolutely. What else? Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Tommen?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Welcome. Is Mrs. Thompson in the room? Hi.
Hi.
Um, do I hear a motion on fifteen-point-three?
I move we appoint Marietta, Marietta Thompson to seat three of the Public Safety Committee for a term expiring December twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Tommen, seconded by Counselor Kenyon. Any questions for Mrs. Thompson or the staff? Wonderful. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Nay.
Oh.
Was that a nay I heard?
Yeah.
Yes, that was me, Counselor Coker.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Welcome. I'm sorry it took so long. Do you finally get your board?
Thank you, Marietta.
All right, fifteen-point-four, um my appointment stands. If anyone wants to make a motion, they can. Otherwise, we will leave it where it is.
Um, I would like to make a motion to appoint Counselor Hollitt to the ODAC committee.
That's out of order.
I second that.
It's against, it's against the charter. Mayor points, council approves.
Okay.
I have a comment to make. The first meeting of the year, you made an appointment, you pointed yourself to the audit committee, and the council voted, and it was a nay, and they made a new appointment. Um, I believe Counselor Kenyon. It was the same scenario, and they made a motion for that, and it did pass.
My silence was agreement.
What?
My silence was agreement. I I didn't object to the appointment. So I appointed, I set my silence.
Okay.
So do we need to object?
No, only, I think what he's saying is only he can object to our mo- our trying to do the same thing that we did in January.
Yeah, it's, I can object because I'm the one that's actually officially appointing the individual to the committee. I not saying anything, that was okay. I was able, I agreed with the appointment.
Oh, okay, so you can object now, and we could actually object to your objection and call for a vote.
Against the charter.
Well, there is a rule that we can I guess I'm gonna have to look it up.
You can suspend the rules of the council of procedure. You cannot suspend the charter.
Can you please specify which part of the charter you're referring to?
Yes, but I'm gonna have to get council's approval to go an extra fifteen minutes.
I think.
I'll approve that. James actually has the charter right there, so maybe.
I would like to make a statement. I think this is frustrating because I think it's a personal feelings you have. I know I've worked hard on the ODAC committee prior and worked to get this committee in order. I've been very involved um with the chambers, which Michelle Emmons did attend a couple meetings back and advocated for my appointment. I've also been very involved in economic development here, in supporting that, in meeting with other groups like RAINN and helping for sort support new business and entrepreneurs. Um, every project I've could tried to help out with, to be involved with that, including bringing the Vanita report forward, and I also am not a councillor appointed to any committees, whereas Counselor Tommen is appointed to the Parks and Rec Committee, and I feel that it's um a personal feeling of yours rather than professionally based, and I think it's extremely unfair.
Well, no one has given me a reason why Counselor Tommen is not qualified to take the position. I offered you a position on the library board, and you said no. In addition, you run the uh fire district re- redistricting. And so, it's not that you don't have responsibility, and I was running ODAC as a city administrator, and I didn't see much of you there, so. Yes, correct. Any other discussion on this?
I, I mean, I I came to Brian when I saw it was empty, and I asked to be on it. So I asked prior to would it even be brought up in council? And so I was surprised when everybody voted no.
Parliamentarian, any concerns?
No concerns at this time, I can I, why don't, if if we want a full report on our charter and council rules, I can provide that at the next meeting.
I I would just get an opinion, a quick opinion from the attorney. And he could take his counsel. Yes, Counselor.
Just real quick, just so you understand, nobody voted no. We just, we didn't vote, period.
No, there was two different times. There was a time where we at, the motion actually did fail to appoint him, and then the next time, no motion was made.
Oh, okay.
This is the third time, I think, or the fourth time.
The charter does state with council approval.
And it does state just that the mayor appoints.
But are we just gonna leave this committee with no councillor on it?
They're doing just fine. They're really a strong committee.
This is ridiculous.
Well, then go ahead and make the motion to appoint Counselor Tommen, and you'll be fine. We'll have a full-up committee.
Since when do we all have to agree with you? This isn't a dictatorship.
You don't have to agree with me, and so here we are. Committee's running just perfectly.
So the motion failed, so then something else has to happen. And I believe we can object to that. It, no, sorry, this is council business. Uh, in council rules, there is a a part for where the council can object to the mayor's decision and have a vote to overrule your objection.
You can do that, but unfortunately, this particular point and approve is in the charter, and you cannot suspend the charter.
I think it might be most productive if we just get the opinion from the city attorney rather than arguing about it now in public if 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 that is agreeable. And I'd also remind council that all committee meetings are open to the public, and all seven councillors and mayor are are welcome to come to any, any committee meeting.
Yeah, um, I really just want to say I disagree with paying to um have an attorney opinion because it sounds like we're we're at a standstill. I understand what he's saying about what's in the charter and that we cannot overrule the charter, even if council rules allows for an objection. So I think we're just at a, at a standstill. And I don't see it's necessary to ask or pay for an opinion.
Okay, we'll, we don't have to do that. All right, moving on. Do we want to stay another fifteen minutes, do a few more ordinances? Yep, okay.
Um, how about then if we, um, could we, in order to finalize some of these, could we do the ones that just need the second reading?
Do you have a preference on this, as priorities that we need to concern?
Oh. Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was what I was gonna say, too.
Okay.
It has a timeline.
So we will start with the first re- three-point-six, which is Trestle Bridge Resolution Zero-Eight dash twenty-twenty-three, first reading. James or Rick? Resolution number zero-eight-dash. Well, hang on, yeah. Let's get a motion, and then um, anyone have any, before we get there, any preliminary questions to this thing, uh kind of, okay? Um. Do I hear a motion on Trestle Bridge Resolution?
I'll make a motion. I move we approve Resolution Zero-Eight dash twenty-twenty-three, Resolution Authorizing Application for a Grant for Salmon Creek Trestle Bridge Restoration Feasibility Study.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made. Oh, motion made by Counselor Hooker and seconded by Counselor Kenyon. Any discussion? Or we vote, and then we will read the resolution. That sound okay, James?
Yes, and I just want to remind council that under Rules of Procedure, Chapter Three, Section Two, C-four, council does have the option of passing a resolution during one meeting, two, two readings during one meeting, but only if the vote is unanimous on both votes. Just an option.
So we will, let's see, vote first on this resolution, and then once that passes, we will, before we read the resolution, make a motion to read it twice and pass it in one session. How does that sound? Okay. And the motion's been made and seconded. Uh, and it was to approve, move to approve the Resolution Zero-Eight Twenty-Two-Three, Resolution Authorizing Application for a Grant for Salmon Creek Trestle Bridge Restoration Feasibility Study. Jackie, uh would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Tommen?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Is there another motion on the table for the readings? Be extemporaneous.
I don't have the recommended motion in front of me, but what I would like to do when we get to the second reading is move to approve it by title only.
And au- authorized in a resolution, James?
I believe it is. I can.
So it, so if we um so the first motion is to
Let's just, let's say, let's say we're going to
We've already made a motion.
We made a motion to pass this resolution. Right, so we can read it and then make a motion to read it by title and pass it in one session.
Thank you.
That make sense, James?
Yeah, we just have to make sure we take two separate votes to make sure the first one is unanimous.
I thought we just did.
In order to.
We just did one vote.
Right.
Got, gotcha. Yeah.
All right, so who's gonna read?
Well, good. All right, uh, Resolution Number Zero-Eight-Dash-Two-Thousand-Twenty-Three. A Resolution Authorizing Application for a Grant for Salmon Creek Trestle Bridge Restoration Feasibility Study. Whereas the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department is accepting applications for the local government program and whereas the City of Oak Ridge desires to participate in this grant program to the greatest extent possible as were as a means of providing needed park and recreation improvements and enhance enhancements. And whereas the City of Oak Ridge City Council has identified that restoring the existing bridge for pedestrian and bicycle use as a high priority need for the City of Oak Ridge. And whereas a city engineer has determined that a detailed feasibility study for rest- restoring the existing bridge for pedestrian, bicycle, and non-motorized use is required to determine the extent of the upgrades and potential cost of the project. And whereas the City of Oak Ridge has available, available local in-kind and actual matching funds to fulfill its share of the obligations related to this grant application, should the grant funds be awarded. And whereas the City of Oak Ridge will provide adequate funding for ongoing operations and maintenance of the park and recreation facility, should the grant funds be awarded. And now therefore be resolved by the City of Oak Ridge, uh, Oak Ridge City Council as follows. In Section One, the City Council demonstrates its support for the submission of a grant application to the Oregon Park and Recreation Department for feasibility study for the restoration of Salmon Creek Trestle Bridge at Salmon Creek. And Section Two, the resolution shall be effective following its adoption by city council. Be further resolved that this resolution shall take effect thirty days after its enactment.
Thanks, Rick. All right, do I hear a second motion?
I move to approve Resolution Zero-Eight-Dash-Two-Thousand-Twenty-Three and do the second reading by title only.
Second. All right, motion made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Tommen. Any concerns? All right, we will take the vote and then uh All right, we will take the vote and then read by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Tarman?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, so the motion is good. And you wanna read by title one more time, Rick?
Sure thing. Resolution number zero eight dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing application for grant for Salmon Creek Trestle Bridge Restoration Feasibility Study.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so taking Counselor Kenyon's suggestion, we will move to thirteen point three, which is the surplus properties Resolution zero five dash twenty twenty-three. You looked at it last meeting. We're good to go. Any concerns before we go for a motion? Okay, I have a motion, please.
I move to approve Resolution zero five dash twenty twenty-three and do the second reading by title only.
Okay, counsel made, motion made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Hooker. Any discussion? All right, the motion was to approve and adopt Resolution zero five twenty twenty-three after the second reading and do the reading by title only. That makes sense, okay? Jackie, would you call for a vote?
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Tarman?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous. Motion passes. Moving on to thirteen point five, actually, we have to read by title only.
Yep. Resolution zero five dash two zero two three, declaring certain property surplus.
There you go. All right, moving on to thirteen point five, which is whack future uses resolution. That says.
Zero seven dash two zero two three.
Okay. I hear a motion.
I move to approve Resolution zero seven dash twenty twenty-three and do the second reading by title only.
Second?
Second.
She made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Tarman. Any discussion? Okay. Jackie, would you call for a vote?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Tarman?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous. James, can you read the title?
Resolution zero seven dash two zero two three, a resolution establishing the purpose and future uses of the Willamette Activity Center.
Thank you. All right, given the time, we're gonna move to public comment unless there's one priority.
If, if we could just do the, the, the new one, because we forgot lot twenty-four in the O I P.
Thirteen point seven?
Yes.
Okay.
It is short. It is one page. It's, we simply forgot lot twenty-four in, in the, in the list. It's, there's nothing special about lot twenty-four. It's very similar to the others.
There's a long list.
Uh, okay, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Resolution zero nine dash twenty twenty-three.
A second? Are you still reading?
No, that's it. I don't have the recommended motion, but.
Declaring O I P lot twenty-four as a surplus property.
Thank you, that's what I meant to say.
Okay.
And I still second.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Hollitt. Any discussion? All right, James, do you wanna read this? You want me to take a turn?
I can read it.
Okay.
Resolution zero nine dash two zero two three, declaring O I P lot twenty-four surplus. Whereas the City of Oak Ridge staff and city council have reviewed all of the parcels currently owned by the City of Oak Ridge, and whereas the Oak Ridge City Council has determined that lot twenty-four in the Oak Ridge Industrial Park, a one point four acre mixed-use property, max and map and tax lot number, I'll leave that out, is not necessarily, no, sorry, not necessary for the continued operations of the city. And whereas the city council will consider any reasonable offers for properties individually or collectively and must approve any potential sales of city property. Now therefore, the Oak Ridge City Council does hereby declare that O I P lot twenty-four surplus to city purposes and intents. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect thirty days after its enactment.
Okay. Any other motions?
I move to approve Resolution zero nine dash twenty twenty-three and do the second reading by title only.
Second.
Was there supposed to be a vote on the first one?
I thought we did.
And we vote?
No, you made the motions, but.
Didn't. Oh, we didn't vote before we read it?
Thanks, Jackie. Can we have a vote on the motion which was to approve the second reading? No, that's not it.
First reading.
First reading.
Zero nine.
Zero nine.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three declaring O I P lot twenty-four as a surplus property. Jack, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Tarman?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimous. Back to your next motion, Counselor Kenyon.
I move to approve Resolution zero nine dash twenty twenty-three and do the second reading by title only.
I have a second. She made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Hooker. Any discussion? Okay, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Tarman?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimous. By title, Resolution zero nine dash twenty twenty-three declaring O I P lot twenty-four surplus. Okay. Good.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that we stay open for a few more minutes to do public comment.
Yes, stay open for a fifty-minute increment, but we'll done before that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
All right, we'll now move on to item sixteen, which is public comment. Anyone on the Zoom like to make a public comment? Ms. Hammond?
Hello, I'm Trudy Hammond, seven six three four nine Willamette Way. And I would just love to say thank you to the planning commission, to the Oak Ridge city staff for approving the conditional use permit for us to continue to provide community pet services. And we have a bulk of pet food coming soon from Green Hill to distribute among our pet owners. And I'd just like to thank city council and, and all the committee members for everything that they've been doing to help us operate in a smooth fashion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other Zoom, people on the Zoom that would like to comment for public comment? None? Anyone in the room like to comment? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name's Karen Thompson. I live at seven six three five two Rock Road here in Oak Ridge. I wanted to say something about the appointment to the Economic Development Committee, and I guess I wanna first say something, just, just one citizen here, but I have really strong, I care a lot about the community. I have really strong feelings in, about economic development in, in our town. I, there's no one person who knows what it would take to do that, to really make us more vital. But for myself and many of my friends and people I know who have businesses on Highway fifty-eight, I think, you know, everyone has different focuses, you know, and things that they're most passionate about. And I'm most passionate, and I believe that having city administration and having citizens put focus on Highway fifty-eight and supporting and developing grants and those businesses and beautifying that area is what it is the route. That's my belief. That, that's the first route. And when, I don't think I've ever been to a meeting where there was an exception to this. When we have conversation here in Oak Ridge about Oak Ridge businesses, it is unilaterally always about uptown as if. Uptown is, is Oak Ridge business, and that's so wrong. It isn't. The businesses along Highway fifty-eight feel left out of the conversation. I hope that Counselor Hollitt will attend the meetings despite the fact that she wasn't the person appointed. If I was, if I was mayor, I would have appointed her, but I hope you will attend, Chrissy, because I know that a, a lot of her passion and the work she's done and the background and just where she is focused, a part of that is on Highway fifty-eight. And she doesn't always talk about uptown in every breath that she, that comes out of her when she's talking about economics for our town. And I, so I just wanna say that. I, I have never seen in four years I've been here, I've never really heard in the chamber or in any of the conversations that, that the city has about our businesses, I never hear about Highway fifty-eight. And my belief is that if we don't do something about fifty-eight and truly supporting those businesses, beautifying it, no one's going to come uptown or want to because it's ugly. So that's just, I, that's just one, like I say, it's one person's opinion. It's also the opinion of, of the majority of my friends. And, and that we need to like stop talking about Oak Ridge businesses as living uptown because the majority don't. That's, yeah, that's it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
For your comments.
Yeah.
Anyone else in the room like to make a comment?
Can you hear me? I wanna make sure the counselors can hear me. Yeah.
Yes.
I'm just gonna stand up because I wanna talk to the audience too. I very much, I wanna talk about O D A C, and I very much agree about the broader vision with O D A C considering all the economic components of our community, even out to Westford and other areas. But I wanna talk about a little bit of history and why O D A C came about. It came about because the city acquired the Oak Ridge Industrial Park, and there's a requirement in that USDA grant that there be a citizen advisory committee. And I served on that committee for a while, and there was a change in that committee that I think happened when the council swept up all the committees and tried to make them all equal and operate the same. And that, that committee never had a vote in, voting counselor on it. And I, I very strongly feel that there should not be a voting counselor on it. And the reason being is that committee is gonna make really important decisions, giving advice. It's just an advisory committee, but giving advice to the council on potential businesses in land sales, especially around the O I P. And if you put a voting member of the, a voting politician on there who's an eventual tiebreaker, you're giving that politician two bites of the apple on that discussion, and you're not getting full citizen input. So I, I was very much against, I wasn't on the, the committee at the time. The committee had, had said that they didn't think that it was a good idea, but the committee was not functioning very well at that time. And I'm gonna say a couple of names that might mean something to some of you. Some of you maybe not, but do you remember Atherton? Do you remember some of the debacles that we've had? And I think separating politics from the role of that committee is really important. And even some of our newer purchases, our newer sales in the O I P especially, where there's been promises of jobs that have not materialized. So I think it's not about you guys. I would, I think you absolutely need to be part of the, the advisory part of the committee, but not voting members. And I'd like to see both interested counselors on it, but not as voting members. And, uh, and I think that if you want a true advisory committee of citizens that are leaning in and giving you input and making that final vote about what comes to you on some of these negotiations or recommendations, and not being on is, is where my vote is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to respond.
Same here.
The new resolution actually says what I'm pretty sure all the committees say is that the counselor only votes in the event of a tie.
Can't hear you, Sarah.
Oh.
Acknowledging that she's right, but still that counselor gets an additional weight on the yea or nay that of a recommendation from the committee that comes to council on making what could be really important economic decisions for our community. So it, it's a very important position. To be in.
I, I'm not sure if this is the reason why you're feeling the way you are, but I do know that also since about twenty nineteen-ish, the council actually makes all the decisions on property sales. There's no, it's not something that's going through the O D A C committee anymore.
I think I understand what she's saying. She's saying if there's a, I mean, a, a property sale and we're vetting it and working through that process, and then there's a tie, well, the counselor gets to decide if it comes forward. And I, from my experience, I think that recommendation actually really makes sense. I do agree, it was really nice to streamline our committees, but in this instance, I actually really agree with Sarah, and I think maybe we should reconsider that on that voting member thing, because really that person gets to decide if it goes forward or not. And wouldn't it be better for something to come to us in a property sale and saying this was a tie? And that, that should be enough. But instead, it would come to us and say, yeah, this was supported by O D A C. And in reality, it really wasn't. It was a tie. It was only supported because a counselor allowed it to come forward.
Or maybe we don't even need a counselor on the committee. It sounds like we're going that way anyways.
All right, any other public comment?
Thank you, Sarah.
In the room.
Thank you, Karen.
All right, it said, and motion to adjourn.
I so move. I love those words.
Need to adjourn at eight twenty-seven.
No, I. Well, it doesn't matter though, even if it.